To get started, as customary, we always have a word of prayer before we start our meeting. And I've asked Mr. Dorsey if he would lead us in this practice time.
Let's pray. Our precious Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to live in the United States of America. We thank you for the many men and women, both past, present, and those in the future, who have fought for our country and defended the freedoms that we have as American citizens. We ask that you be with those in emergency services as they protect us throughout the duration of today, this evening, and going forward. Keep us free from harms way. Keep those who protect us free from harms way. And EMS, fire, and law enforcement, we ask that you be with each and everyone here tonight after the people's business is conducted with safe travel and mercy's home. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let's all stand if you're able to pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for that. First of all, I'd like to call this business meeting April 9, 2024, of the Hart County Board of Commissioners to order. Like to welcome each one here tonight, whether you're here in person or you're watching HTC Channel 3 or our YouTube channel, Hart County Board of Commissioners. We appreciate all of you being with us tonight. First thing we got to do is approve the agenda, and I think we're going to amend the agenda to executive session.
Correct. Move two adjustments. Move executive session up to the front of the whole business. Or is that where y'all was going, that's front of the old business?
I was going to go right after approved agenda.
Okay, alright, let's move it there.
If there's no, is that okay, whatever?
That's good.
And then under 13C, add permission to bid to football and cheerleading uniforms, just to send the bids out. Under 13C.
Will those changes are given motion approved?
Sack. Okay. And the executive session litigation still stays on the bottom?
Correct.
Okay. And this executive session, the first one is going to be litigation?
Correct.
Alright, we got a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Teasley. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? Okay, so five vote. Alright, so now at this time, can I get a motion to exit into executive session?
Any motion?
Sack for litigation. Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's five vote. We'll be back as quick as we can, folks.
All right, can we get a motion to exit executive session back in the record session?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five oh. So we're back in record session now. And we'll move on to approved minutes, previous meeting, three twenty-six, twenty-four. Do we have any additions or corrections to those?
Page four, there's a correction on the zoning. When we read what was on municide, it was, we read the B two, which included B one. So just want to clarify that.
Okay. All right.
Those amendments, I give a motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Brown to approve, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five oh vote. Now we'll move on to remarks by anybody, yes committees authority, we have none. Reports by constitutional office department heads, Miss Kim. Okay, we have none there. County administration report, financial report.
Good market financial report. You look at the actual revenue for the month of nine hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and sixty-five. Expecting to start taking off those tax lines, but actually, actually, one thing, one thing, three hundred eighty-four thousand one ninety-nine. It's slightly above the normal for the month, or average for month. That has a variance of four hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred thirty-four dollars less than the first expenses. The year-to-date, it's all down, was here at four point four million six hundred and two thousand seven point seven. Real estate came in at seventy about six twenty-five, which is normal. Laws came in at three twenty-three, five eighty-two. U S B is the hundred thousand one sixty-six. The title piece, ten point one twenty-eight, one eighty-two. For the year, we got fifty-one percent on revenue. Expenses are about five percent under the budget. That's about it. If you had to answer any questions, anybody may have.
Vehicle title piece, that's normal.
Well, it's down a little bit. Down just a hair. Again, overall market's still in pretty good shape. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, then we'll move on to Chairman's report. I'd just like to say that I know there's been a lot of controversy back and forth as far as annexation here in Hart County. And I know the city council met last night and had some educational material, I'd say, from the ACCG, which we as county commissioners are part of. And I'd just like there to say, you know, people, let's just stay calm. Let's just, you know, work together and let's just, there's no room for hatred toward anybody in Hart County. There's no room for, you know, talking, backbiting, and these sorts of things. There's laws that we can go by. There's, there's processes that we have the right as a county commission to do. And the city has a right, and the property owner has a right. I don't hate anybody. I don't hate Charlene for bringing this annexation here. I don't hate the city for their meeting last night. My phone blew up after that. But, but then, but, you know, we'll get through this. We'll work through this and we'll, you know, we want to do what's best for Hart County. And, and I think that's what all the commissioners, where they stand on this point. But I just wanted to say that, you know, let's, let's, let's try to not get motivated to any kind of hateful remarks or anything like that. I just, that's not my nature and I don't want our county to turn into something like that. But that's all I have. I just want to express my opinion there and I'll turn it over to District One, Commissioner Bennett.
I don't have anything, just time, Mr. Chairman, but thank you.
All right, District Two, Commissioner Teasley.
I've done a few work orders. I appreciate Shannon and them, you know, appreciate our public safety and first responders on what they do about keeping us safe. And that's all I got.
All right, we'll move to District Four, Commissioner Brown.
The same thing. That's all I have is just want to appreciate the road department and everyone else as well. But I know I've had several work orders, still lingering over from the storms and whatnot. And those guys have been working hard at the road department. We really do appreciate them. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, District Five, Commissioner Dorsey.
Yeah, I'd like to echo your comments, Mr. Chairman, regarding the annexation. And it's, it's a property owner's right and we have to abide by the laws that are passed in Atlanta. So just wanted to echo your comments.
All right, all right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to twelve A, Old Business City of Hart County Annexation Request Partial at Powell Road Arbitration. And can I get a motion to go to arbitration on this partial?
Now, I give you a motion. Do you need me to specify?
Based on, yeah.
Make sure I don't leave anything else, but I make a motion that we object and go to arbitration based off of density and, and infrastructure. Am I leaving anything off?
Material increase.
Material increase, that's right.
Material increase in density and road infrastructure.
Based off the sit-down restaurant increase in density.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Brown. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dorsey. Any discussion? Any questions? Anyone? Okay, if not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's a five oh vote. And one other thing that was based on that motion, I don't know if this is important, of Miss Kim, is contingent on the city council on their vote, where this is a necessary item. So should that motion be contingent on that or just are we all right like we are? Okay.
I didn't mean to include that in mine. I failed to discuss.
I'm sorry. I didn't. That's okay.
Well, I think by the nature, if it goes, if whatever reason, they dawned, it is a moving point anyway.
All right, next we'll go on to bid opening fire turnout gear.
All right, we've got one question before we start with these. We've received a lot of bids. We've got five, five that does not have it marked on the outside of them what it's for. The policy and the bids specify us to have them labeled on the outside. But again, it's to y'all, it's the board's discretion whether or not you want to consider these bids or not consider these bids. We have.
I think we should consider all bids, don't you?
Four, four for the helmets and four for the, that are marked correctly. It's up to y'all what you want to do with the unmarked bids.
So could some of the unmarked be for helmets?
It could be for either one. We don't have any idea what they're for.
That's what I'm saying. I think we ought to consider. Sure it specifies in the packet, right?
Yeah, I mean, all bids are specified, you label outside what they're for.
That's it, my one. Might as well look at all of them, let you guys look at all of them. I say we, we open them off and let you guys look at all of them. If you guys agree.
All right. We'll start off with the turnout gear.
Should we not vote on that trail since that is some of the dedication?
It made me feel better.
I give you a motion.
Second by, a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote all in favor. It's five oh. Okay. So we're going to open all the bids. Could we put the four that's not labeled, can we open those first and then categorize those with the helmets or the turnout gear?
Great suggestion.
It may not be easy, Washley, it may get placed for us.
It may be cheerleader.
We weren't going to take any change to open in the package, it might be a bid.
Yeah.
So let's just put that, that's the gear.
I guess this is a business ship.
Was yours level?
This is the helmets.
Okay, let's just put, let's put these helmets together and then yours is turnout gear.
What was yours, Joe? Helmets.
Helmets.
This is a helmet, too. Jackets, pants.
That'd be turnout gear.
That's turnout gear.
Okay, helmets. This is helmets.
He's got helmets.
Helmets. What's one of that?
This is turnout gear.
Wait a minute, let me see my, the one I have. This helmets.
This helmets. This helmets.
Get one show, one second.
Turnout gear.
All right.
That's turnout gear.
This one guys.
All them unmarked turnout gear helmets.
He's got turnout gear.
What?
Okay, since we got turnout gear here, let's just.
I got a bid from ten eight Fire and Safety LLC out of Bradenton, Florida. Total price is two hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety cents. Next is the turnout gear.
Turnout, yeah.
Got a bid from Fireline Incorporated, two hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars.
I got one for Bennett Fire Products Company for two hundred and seven thousand and eight hundred and seventy dollars.
This right here is Technology International and is two hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred and five dollars.
Got one from North America Fire Equipment Company Incorporated. Didn't say where it's from. It's for two hundred thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars even. Is that all of them? I don't know. I got two of them out there. You put it on turnout gear that high?
One, two.
Yeah, I got one of them.
Yeah. Get a motion to turn these over to the fire chief and training officer and Terrell.
I got one from Williams here for a hundred and eighty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-two.
That was turnout gear.
It's turnout gear.
All right.
One eighty-nine, one seventy-two, eighty-five. And I just handed, I had two in mind. I handed Frankie one. He's still looking for that back there.
This right here is from, let's say.
Williams seemed to be the lowest so far.
Oh, yeah, one, one, one hundred and ninety-seven, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-five cent.
Yeah, that bid is an alternate. If you look at, Terrell, this one right here is.
The one ninety-seven.
Williams Fire.
Yeah. But they also, Williams also presented an alternate bid. So there may be some language in there to change. I'm sure you are there.
All right, can we get a motion to turn this over to Terrell and the chief of fire and.
Let's, let's also add that motion, let the station captains be involved in this too. Because I've got, I've heard some complaints and some praises of what we've bought in the past, so.
I'll make the motion.
I'll try to have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion. We turn it over to the fire chief, the county administrator, the fire training officer to meet with station captains to review and make a recommendation.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey.
Give you a second.
Second, Commissioner Brown, any discussion?
I would just want to add one point that I think a lot of times on these bids, we go with the cheapest. I would like to offer my opinion that we not necessarily go with the cheapest, but also look for best quality. I've had a few firefighters that have expressed that they may have better retention, may be able to gain more volunteers out of this, as well as these, these firefighters feeling better about their equipment running into burning houses if we get better quality versus cheaper. So I know we're obviously operating on a budget, but I would like for us to also see for best quality.
Our policy states the best bid. It don't say the lowest bid.
Yeah, some cases we've not taken the lowest bid. I'll just put my two cents, what it's worth, two cents.
I'm with you though. I like the good stuff.
You'll go through the helmets?
Yeah, take an eight-foot bid, truck over six-foot in. We got second, that's the second.
Motion say it, all in favor?
Five oh.
Okay.
This right here is from Bennett Fire Products, nineteen thousand three hundred and twenty dollars.
Dude, I'm sorry to get you.
Bennett, Bennett Fire Products.
This is from North America Fire Equipment. Price for sixty helmets, traditional style firefighter helmets, twenty-four thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
Got one from Fireline Incorporated, sixty traditional style firefighter helmets, twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars.
All right, we got a little problem. So this particular bid had both the turnout gear and the helmets in it.
If it pleases the board, if you read me off the other, we'll add it into the other bid.
Somebody up there?
No objection.
This is a bid for turnout gear from Vitco Fire and Safety Incorporated out of Macon, Georgia, $233,553.
All right, this, I was thinking only this two bid thing, Williams here. They've done an alternate again on their helmets. They've got 26, 880. That is not the alternate. Those are primary. And their alternate, I think it just pays turnout here. Their alternate is $24,780, which is about $2,000 less. I will put these back in the song, shipping them away.
All right, we got a bid from Galls, G-A-L-L-S, LLC, 60 traditional style firefighter helmets for $23,585.40. Is that everybody?
No, I got some more. The other ones we opened, too, if you want.
Oh, yeah.
These are the helmets.
Okay.
So I've got a bid from Vitco Fire and Safety again for the helmets out of Macon, Georgia, $28,362. And I've got another one from Proviscous Services out of Atlanta, $30,287.49.
Got one here from Technology International Incorporated out of Lake Mary, Florida, $398 each, totaling for $23,880 even for 60 helmets.
Got a bid from 10-8 Fire and Safety LLC, 60 traditional fire style helmets, $22,930.5. Any more?
That's all.
That looks pretty close.
I'll make a motion. We turn the bids over to the County Administrator, Fire Chief, and Fire Training Officer to review with the station captains.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey. Second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion?
Turnout gear. There's the helmets.
That person's turnout gear.
And if not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's five oh vote. Okay. All right, we'll move on to new business. 2023 Emergency Management Performance Grant.
This is kind of sort of much informative stuff. We received the 23 grant for the emergency management that we get usually every year. It's about $8700. Just to let you know, we got it, and not yet authorized a sign to executive.
I'll make a motion. We authorize the County Administrator to sign for this emergency management grant.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey. Second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? All right, it's five oh vote. Now, we'll move on to discussion engineering replacement of solid waste collection. I asked Carol if he would put this on the agenda, because we need to get something going on that solid waste facility over there, because we're going to be getting more trash next year than we are this year. And the building that we're using now is dilapidated, the sides are missing, and I would like to see us build another building beside it and get it going, and then come back and repair this one without having to shut the solid waste facilities down. I know that's a problem for everybody. We can't afford to do that, so, but we do need to get started on another structure to facilitate our solid waste.
I'll make a motion to go ahead to the Commission Engineering Group to start putting together something for these buildings, far as design and build.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Bennett and second by Commissioner Teasley. Carol, is that something you can handle to get done?
Yeah, I can take care of it.
All right. All right, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? It's five oh vote. All right, then we'll move on down to permission to send football bids out.
As for uniforms and cheerleaders' uniforms.
And cheerleaders, okay. I'll make a motion. We send the bids out for football uniforms and cheerleaders and uniforms.
Second.
Got a motion. I made a motion, and Commissioner Teasley made the second. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote. All in favor? It's five oh vote. All right, now we come to the pub, public comment. If anyone would like to speak on public comment, where this is not a time for any kind of remarks toward an individual commissioner or those sorts of things, but if you've got something that you want to bring before the county, we welcome you. We want to hear from you. So we'll have public comment at this time. Has anybody got any one with public comment? Okay, if not?
Hi, sir.
Okay, yes, sir. If you would come to the front, please. Yes, sir. If you would, state your name right here, so we can see you on TV. You might be a star.
My name is Chad Carlson. I live at 127 Holly Street. Apparently, there was an annexation of a property around me recently. Got no public notice of that. Got no, not even a, hey, we're going to annex this property, which in essence creates an island of a one-acre lot of county property. My house is in the city, my one-acre lot behind, now has about an eight-foot easement behind it. I want to know how that happens. How does a neighbor not even get notified?
Okay.
First of all, there is a process.
Okay.
The process starts with the person who wants to annex that property to go to the city and file petition to be annexed, okay? At that point, the annexation is sent to the county, and we see if there's any objections. We did object to it because of an unincorporated island. That was our opinion. Now, the city's opinion is that it does not create an unincorporated island.
Okay.
So, because the, and both sides have got good points. I'm not putting the city down. I'm not putting the county down, but they read the map a little different than we do. We think the map, each parcel should be colored all the way in, where the city map actually shows an arc going through that property.
Yeah, we call it the witches hat.
Right.
I mean, we all know.
It's not entirely in the city or the county. So in that point of view, it does not create an unincorporated island.
Okay.
So, but when they get to the point of zoning, you'll be, they'll put signs up and all that will go on down there, as far as I know. I don't know if the city has put signs up down there yet or not.
Not to my knowledge.
The county's not required to put signs up.
Okay.
The city, when it gets time...
As where it stands right now, has it been officially annexed?
Yes.
It has been officially, so there's no recourse now.
No. No, I mean, we don't have, I mean...
Which is kind of, I'm sorry, I'm new to this whole coming and talking to a bunch of you guys.
Yeah.
So I really don't know what the hell I'm doing. Sorry for that language.
Hey, that's fine.
Me and you both, brother.
The county did agree in the annexation that they would provide services to your lot behind your house.
Without paying additional taxes.
What lot? My?
You got two parcels there.
Yeah.
And so the one in the back is in the county.
Yeah.
The one in the front's in the city. The city agreed that if you all called for fire protection, it's going to generate that address, and they're coming anyway, whether it's in your lot behind or the lot in front.
How does that affect me walking out of my county property and having gear in my backyard?
All I can tell you is that when you ask, that is, that was their concession there.
My buddies can come help me start fires. Sorry, I'm a little bit, I'm trying to adhere to your rules.
I understand.
But it is frustrating.
I understand that, too.
There wasn't even a notice that, hey, we're going to talk about this in this forum.
Mm-hmm.
But it does affect my property.
Right.
It graphically affects my property.
Right.
And again, I'm not going to get into personalities and all that kind of stuff that are fully apparent in this situation, but I just want to know how, for future people, like, to be able to say, hey, this is something that is going to potentially happen. You have your right to come and put your voice out there. I didn't have my right to put my voice out there, because I didn't know it. I don't read the newspaper. That's my fault. I'm not on social medias. I don't do any of that stuff, so I don't know. I had to call the mayor and ask him where this meeting was tonight.
Okay.
Because I don't, I didn't grow up here.
Right.
I don't know where Bud Liddley's farm is. When they put out fire calls, I'm a volunteer firefighter, too. When they put it out and go past so-and-so mill and this and that, I don't know where I'm going. I have to type it in. I'm not from here.
Right.
But I love this place, and I want to be.
We appreciate it.
Is he the one, his property's the one that split?
Yes, property.
See, your property's been the basis of this whole argument, and you didn't even know about it.
I didn't even know.
We have been, yes, we've talked about it.
I know, and I didn't know it.
Yeah.
Well, I was under the impression that you were one of the first ones that the property owner who annexed the property talked to you.
He came and talked and never heard anything. He goes, this is what I'm proposing.
Man, it would've been nice to have you up here about a month ago.
Yeah, so now I'm...
I'd be mad, too.
I'm...
So there was a...
I'm trying not to say the bad words right now, so, but it's frustrating, because I have an island, and it's great that they're going to send the fire department and EMS. That's perfect. Great.
Well, EMS, we don't have but one EMS to provide public safety for the whole county anyway, but yeah, the fire and police protection, that's going to be the services.
You're still hunting back there.
You're still county. Oh, yeah, it is.
Well, right now it is. You might not be hunting deer in about a couple of months, the way things are going.
Yeah, especially if he's...
I mean, I hate to be that way, but...
Our only ability to object is whether or not we can reach your property in the back, if we needed to get to it to provide county services.
Okay, yeah, I have a driveway, so...
The city's stance was that because the arc of the city limits cut it in half or more, that it was part county and part city, and that we still had the access on the county part, and that if services needed to be provided, it would be the city. So then it's up to the county at that point. That's a lawsuit.
Do you pay city taxes on that back parcel?
I am double taxated with that representation, apparently.
No, it's a county, it's a county.
I pay county tax in the back, and I pay city tax.
But not on the back parcel, you don't pay?
No, I pay city tax on the back parcel.
And if you look at the city arc around the city, it doesn't track property lines. It's a circle.
Okay.
And this is going to happen again, and so I think...
And that's a frustrating thing for us.
It's frustrating to us. We want to outline of the parcels. It needs to be more defined.
It does.
But I understand their point, too, that you just can't fill in the partial because they haven't asked to be annexed yet.
Yeah.
So, and it would have made way more sense to come to the property owner and go, hey, here's this little island. Do you want to be annexed in? My answer to that would have been, no, I don't want to be annexed in. I don't mind paying double taxes. Well, they're not going to, they're not going to come to you and ask you to annex. You will have to go to them and petition to be annexed.
Okay. Well, I'm, again, I'm not a politician or anything like that.
It might be why you weren't asked, because the, you know...
They just assumed.
Yeah, she didn't want to be annexed. It's easier not to ask.
Give me a call sometime. I'll be happy to sit down with you, and we'll go over some of this stuff.
Yeah, but I have no recourse at this point.
Hold strong. Yeah, I mean...
I mean, from what I hear, he wants to put a street coming off of Holly right on the side of my property. That's going to drive in the back.
The city zoning board is still working on that, so it may not happen the way he wants it to happen. I don't know. I'm not involved in the city zoning, but they are still working on that as far as...
That's what I said.
Yeah, he can go to the city many.
It's not our call.
Yeah.
Hey, you can...
You can petition the city to de-anex where you're currently at, I think, without creating an unincorporated island.
I'm sorry, I'm hard of you.
I think you can de-anex, request to de-anex where you're currently at, what's in the city. I don't, I can't remember this.
So I could take my house out of the city and put it into the county?
You could petition to do that, as long as it doesn't create an island.
The mayor lives on my street. He's not going to let me annex my house.
But you have property rights, is what we're telling them.
See, I have no knowledge of all that. I'm a rookie at this, so...
I think they said that's not an island.
Yeah.
But if you look at the plot lines, even on Joe Public or whatever that website is...
Joe Public.
What is it?
Public, whatever it is.
Yeah, not a good make you laugh, but...
They didn't get that domain name when you did hear Joe Public.
I don't know what it is, but, so, but I just wanted to voice my frustration.
Hey, I appreciate you doing it.
In the best way I can possible to go, I don't want somebody else to be sitting down the same run.
You're right.
So, without even knowledge, to be able to come in here and fight for it.
Yeah, they might give you a de-annex action. It wouldn't hurt to ask for it.
Thanks for talking.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
The story begins, you had your little war on the property.
Okay.
And so, okay, that was my question.
All right, any other public comment? If not, can we get a motion to exit into...
Give you a motion to exiting into executive session.
For litigation.
For litigation.
Okay. We got a motion by Commissioner Brown. Second by Commissioner Teasley. All in favor? It's five oh vote. Thank you all for being here tonight.